Okay, I want to make sure everybody had a chance to fill out a question for the candidates. There's cards over here on the bar to fill that out. We want to get started. Thank you for everyone being here tonight for the Candidates Forum sponsored by the Asheville Downtown Association. I wanted to just take a minute to talk about the ADA and what we do. Most of you all know that we have a lot of events: Downtown After Five, the most recent Oktoberfest which was a sellout last weekend, the Holiday Parade, and Jingle Fest, and Easter on the Green. But we do a lot of other things, including issues, and I am Byron Griner and I'm Chair of the Issues Committee, former past president. And we've worked on a lot the last few years. Just want to cover those really quickly. We worked on the handicap parking issue, which, as you know, we had an issue with storing vehicles with a handicap placard, and the city sought to change that, and since then we've had a lot of parking spaces free up. We've worked on programming Pritchard Park, and Pritchard Park before was not a safe place to be, and we do the Hula Hoop Jam on Tuesday nights, the Singer-Songwriter event on Thursday nights, we help with the Drumming Circle on Friday nights, and on Saturday we've done an arts and crafts fair. More program in the park makes it a safer place. We've also been very involved with the Downtown Master Plan and with the Business Improvement District. We've helped fund that. We've staffed people to help that move along, and of course we have a long way to go to see the bid come into reality. We also did a walkability study of all the downtown, and we photographed and inventory issues that were tough for our handicap folks and just basically pedestrians, and we presented that to the city, and the city has made some strides in making those corrected, and we have a long way to go, so that was one of the things we did. And about three months ago, we did a downtown cleanup, and that cleanup was designed to show the city, the residents of the city, how dirty downtown was. We get that it's the number-one thing we hear over and over with visitors and residents alike, and so we have a lot of opportunity on cleaning the downtown. We'll discuss a little bit more on that at the Candidates Forum. And then the last thing I want to highlight is snow removal, and of course we haven't had that issue in the last couple of years, but prior to that, we've worked hard to make sure that the merchants took care of their sidewalks as the ordinance allows, and then also the city to make sure that the streets were safe so that our pedestrians and our businesses could thrive during those bad weather times. So we have a lot more to do, and we'll hear a lot more tonight from our candidates. I want to turn it over to David Haran, who is our moderator for tonight, and I just want to thank everyone for being here.
Thanks very much for coming out. Thanks to the Asheville Downtown Association for asking me to serve as the moderator of this forum. And also, I'd like to thank the candidates here who are willing to serve. It's not an easy thing to do, takes time and energy, and so thank you very much for your willingness to serve. I just want to go over real quick the format and the rules. The format and the rules were created by the ADA, by the Issues Committee. The questions come from a survey of the ADA members. Each candidate is aware of the subject matter, but not necessarily the exact wording of various questions. Each candidate will pick a number from this basket, and the slip of paper is numbered, there are corresponding questions for each number, and then they will be asked to answer that specific question. The candidates will have up to three minutes to answer the question. They will also have three minutes to make a closing statement. Now, if I misspeak, someone from the ADA can give me a holler and let me know that somehow I confused the rules, but if Byron wants to clarify, he may.
I just wanted to mention that the second round will be questions from the audience, and the Issues Committee will be looking through those, and we will pick seven to allow our candidates to speak to those.
I do have that in my notes, and again, three minutes to answer those, the second round, and those numbers will come out of this basket as well, all right? I mentioned that each candidate will have three minutes for a closing statement, and also there are some instructions and rules for the audience. One is if you have a cellphone, please turn it off. Now, if mine goes off, and of course it's discussion, then you know that I don't know how to work my phone very well. And also, I would request that there be no applause during the discussion. Let's begin. We have two candidates running for mayor. The vice mayor is here, that's Esther Mannheimer. John Miles here, he is making his first bid for elective office. The candidates for city council, there are five candidates running for three seats on city council: incumbent Cecil Bothwell making his first bid for elective office, Mike Lanning, incumbent Gordon Smith making his first bid for elective office, Jonathan Wayne Scott and making her first bid for elective office, Gwen Whistler and Gordon Smith. We went through the line, correct? Everyone got mentioned there? Oh, good. All right, so without further ado, we will pick numbers from this basket. Can everyone hear okay? Good, all right. Help yourself, pass it down, please. Who has number one? You can pass the basket back, that would be nice. Yeah, who has number one? Cecil Bothwell has number one? All right, the first question.
I think they put their numbers back.
Oh, they did?
Once we remember our numbers.
As long as you remember your number, they're gone. Write your number down, please. All right, so there is a timekeeper. Three minutes, she will let you know that you're running close, and unfortunately, I'm in the position where I have to enforce the time, so I have a very long stick. The first question, number one goes to...
Do we need to pass the mic?
That would be helpful. It's a wireless mic.
I thought maybe that was...
All right, question number one, again, from the ADA Issues and from its members. Number one, cleanliness was the number-one issue identified by respondents on a recent survey developed by the Asheville Downtown Association. How would you address this issue, Cecil Bothwell?
Hmm, there are a lot of issues around cleanliness, and probably the worst problem that we have, from my observation downtown, are cigarette butts. And that piece of the problem is principally triggered by the state law that prevents people from smoking inside bars, so they go outside and drop their butts on the street. One of the things that I'm watching closely is Black Mountain's experience with having banned all cigarette smoking on public sidewalks in Black Mountain. If it works out over this first year there, I would like to, I would advocate that Asheville goes the same direction, which is stop smoking on the sidewalks. I think that'll be one big piece of the downtown mess. We're also working toward installing recycling bins downtown and now trash cans and recycling outpaten toward the bridge. That will help also, because having a place to throw your trash is a big piece of it. I'd like to say that we could easily do more street sweeping, but there's a considerable expense involved in that. I would point out that according to our city ordinances, that all property owners are supposed to keep their own properties clear, their sidewalks clean, and therefore it does fall to downtown owners, and many downtown owners certainly do a great job keeping their own sidewalks clean. So it's a combination, to my mind, of community activity, that is action by people in the community, official actions from the city in terms of perhaps changing the rules and certainly providing more receptacles, and I guess that's where I see it going. I don't have much more to say than that. I mean, there are things we can do, they cost money, they cost a lot of money to do it frequently, our budget is such that we can't do everything all the time.
Who has number two? I really don't know, okay? This is Gwen Whistler. The question is, "Asheville Police Chief William Anderson recently announced a 52% increase in violent crime and a 34% increase in property crime in downtown Asheville over a three-month period this summer. What is your plan to address increased crime downtown?"
Well, one thing that I know that we've talked about is the fact that the police department right now is experiencing an understaffed situation, and Chief Anderson has said that that understaffing situation hasn't caused any problems with safety. I guess as a city councilperson, it is city council's responsibility to make sure that the city manager actually manages the police department and Chief Anderson, so I would focus on making sure that the city manager addresses that with Chief Anderson and that we, as city council, address if there are budget issues that we need to address from a budgeting and fiscal perspective. I believe that's city council's job, and the managing actually the crime rate or managing the management of the crime rate is the city manager's job, and so I would work through that channel. But really, it's city council's job to make sure the money's there, and that is the question, that's the job of council, and I would make sure that they had adequate fiscal resources in order to make, to decrease our crime rates.
Okay, number three?
I have number three.
Jonathan Wayne Scott has number three. The third question is, "The ADA survey identified homelessness and aggressive panhandling as a major area of concern in the community. What is your approach to solving it?"
Well, I would say this just is another issue of downtown crime prevention. What I would like to see, I briefly discussed it with Mr. Lanning, is the use of auxiliary police units in the city. These would be more peace officers responding to nonviolent crimes, traffic accidents and those kinds of things, and that would perhaps free up some resources of our more highly-trained law enforcement officers and perhaps this auxiliary force. There are a few cities in the country that use them. Some are volunteer-based, others are paid. I would like to see a paid staff with career jobs for people who want to keep the peace, and that way we could free up some resources within law enforcement. So for me, I see this as just another example of, you know, crime and nuisance in the city that would be mitigated by law enforcement, and that's all I got to say.
I have number four, David.
Number four, okay. Number four, the question is, "Do you support an ordinance that requires private property owners to remove graffiti or face penalty? If not, what is your plan to address the issue of graffiti?"
Thanks. I want to thank the Downtown Association for putting this on, and for all y'all who are here tonight. Everyone who's here tonight is here because they love downtown and want to make sure that it's doing as well as it can do, and so thanks for all of your efforts. As I look across this crowd and I look at the collective experience of downtown here, it's humbling to be the one answering this question. The graffiti issue is a serious issue, not only in downtown, but all over the place. I live over in West Asheville, we see it over there, it's in south, it's in east, it's in north. I'd like to go ahead and just quickly distinguish between the graffiti vandals and the graffiti artists. I'd like to thank the graffiti artists in this town who have been putting up beautiful murals that help to deter graffiti vandalism and also help us become more of an arts destination as you see it wherever you go. We have in place the nuisance court, which has been extraordinarily helpful. Folks who are popped for these small crimes end up doing volunteer service hours, and they have clocked thousands of hours in graffiti cleanup. This has been a very successful program, and it's one I'd like to see continue. I'm a member of the Public Safety Committee, and we've heard quite a lot of information on this from Chief Anderson and other senior staff, and I've been shocked at the sophistication of the graffiti vandals. They tend to be these days working in teams, they have reconnaissance on the areas, and the worst part, for those of you who are business owners out here and have been hit by these graffiti vandals, is they can move in, hit very quickly, move on, they're often wearing masks, they're talking to one another via text to be aware of where the police patrols are, so catching them can be very difficult. Not to mention, the sophistication has gone from spray paint hands to glass cutters in some cases, and that is a very quick way to cost downtown business owners a lot of money very quickly. There's a couple of things I wanted to let you know about going forward. One is that the DA is looking at stiffer penalties for graffiti vandals, and I'm very supportive of his doing that. Another is that there's way too deter graffiti and it's fast cleanup, rapid cleanup, within 48 hours. So the question becomes, does the city establish a, you know, three guys in a truck to do that at, you know, $250,000 a year, or do we require downtown business owners to pay a fine? We looked at this for a long time at Public Safety, couldn't come to that decision. We were on this side and then on this side, trying to look at it from every angle, and so what we did at the last Public Safety Committee was said, okay, well, let's get it out of this committee and let's kick it up to council. So that's going to be one of the first things that your newly-seeded council is going to address, is the question of graffiti. And I'm going to ask for everyone's input on this. I don't have the answer yet, but I do know that those two options are going to be your top two.
Thank you very much. Now we're up to number five, okay, Mike Lanning. The question number five, number five is, "The ADA has received complaints from both tourists and business owners regarding toplessness in downtown. How would you address the issue?"
Well, the legislation tried to address the problem, and it wasn't able to pass any laws to change it. I know that people were upset, and I know people were offended when they go downtown and they have these topless rally. I don't know what the answer is. I mean, if the legislation's having problems passing new laws that would address it, you can't force the local police to enforce laws that aren't on the books. About the only way it can be addressed, I think, is trying to not publicize it so much. The problem is, it becomes so public, people come down and want to make it as a mockery, they want to come downtown and view it and make fun of it or videotape it. Unless the laws are changed, I really don't know if there's anything much to be done about it. You can try to enact the local ordinance, but with a lot of local ordinances, there's no teeth in them unless the DA's office wants to prosecute them, and unless there's good teeth in the law, there's not really much to be done about it. I'm sorry.
Number six for Esther Mannheimer. "The south slope of downtown has emerged as a new area of development in the central business district. How do you envision the city supporting growth in that area?"
I want to start by thanking the Downtown Association for having us as well, and I would mention that, and it truly is an honor and pleasure to be here, and it's been a pleasure to work with many of you over the last several years. I too am a downtown business owner. I own a part of my law firm, which is over on Market Street, and have been working and coming downtown for the last 11 years since I've been with the firm, and of course before that in other contexts. And I understand that this downtown is the economic engine for Buncombe County and probably more broadly for western North Carolina. It's vital, sometimes called the gold dig, and I think that's very appropriate, and I'm glad that we have such an active and engaged downtown association to be able to partner with the city because there's so many things that have been achieved and can and still will be achieved. With regard to the south slope, the city, and I share this, has really identified the south slope as one of the key areas to emerge going forward. Joe Minicozzi, who's here, I'm calling you out, Joe, with the Downtown Association, has done an excellent job of schooling us, us being city council, about the return on the investment when you invest in your downtown, because what results is dense, highly valuable construction that brings to the city's coppers high property tax revenue, but also can create a wonderful vibrant downtown that provides good quality jobs and amenities for everyone to enjoy. The south slope is an area that is, you know, patchy, I guess is one way of describing it. Some places are being highly utilized, other pieces of land are not at all. So in the city's budget, that was adopted this last year as part of the five-year capital improvement program, you will see in their capital investment in the south slope of downtown, what does that look like? That looks like street repair, sidewalk improvement, undergrounding utilities, basically doing everything the city can do to invest in that area to make it shovel-ready for investment by private businesses, by individuals, doing what we can to come and meet you halfway so that investment can be made in that area and with the guidance of the Downtown Master Plan, be developed in a way that is visionary as the citizens saw the development for that downtown to be planned, and that's reflected in the Downtown Master Plan.
John Miles obviously has the seventh question. "The ADA developed a walkability study for downtown in 2012 and presented it to city council. While the city has addressed some priority areas, several have not been addressed. What is your plan for making downtown more pedestrian-friendly, including those with physical challenges?"
I would also like to take a moment of my time to thank the association for the invitation tonight, Megan for all her hard work in planning and executing this. I know there were other people in the background, thank you, and it's a pleasure to have this opportunity. Over the course of my career in City Hall, I had the chance to work with some of you. Sometimes we disagreed, sometimes we agreed, but we always found a way to work it out. I think the walkability issue is especially important to downtown. I cannot think of another section of Asheville where walking is perhaps more important. We may walk in our neighborhoods, we may walk a lot of places, but downtown is largely a walking community, and I think the commitment to that has to be paramount in terms of our future development. Back in the 90s, I believe it was, when the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed, there was a huge flurry of activity and money spent to make downtown as accessible as possible to people with handicaps. That was done out of necessity. I'm not real sure we kept that up. Even as I was retiring, a little over seven years ago, I began to see claims against the city, people having issues and difficulty in wheelchairs and so forth. So I don't think we ever met our full commitment to those who are physically challenged and need better access. Overall, I'd say the walkability is a function of sidewalks. If you are happy with the condition of the sidewalks downtown, then you ought to be happy with the current council and the current people up here. To the extent that past behavior predicts future behavior, and I believe that in every walk of life, if you think we can do better, you're going to have to vote for a change. Every street, every sidewalk in this town, excuse me, is the result of being, of having been allowed to degrade to the point where it's unfunctional in a lot of cases, excuse me, and the people that are on this day as tonight, that have been on council for the last four years, have had ample opportunity to hear you and to do something about it. I would simply suggest it's time for a change.
So we're going to pass the basket again and draw one through seven, and we'll ask the next round of the questions. The candidates will have, again, three minutes to respond. Megan Rogers is the timekeeper, and she will let us know how they're doing. Okay. This question is for Jonathan Wayne Scott from the audience. "Was the $2 billion allocation to the Asheville Art Museum presented in the post-2013-14 budget presented at any public hearing before it was approved by council?" Jonathan Wayne Scott.
Could you repeat that real quick?
"Was the $2 billion allocation to the Asheville Art Museum presented in the 2013-14 budget discussed in any public hearing before it was approved by council?"
I'm not aware of if it was discussed prior to that or not.
Jonathan Wayne Scott, what is your opinion of the allocation and your understanding of the allocation to the art museum?
My understanding of the allocation is that it's, I think, broken up into $500,000 units over four years or $400,000 units over five years. I moved to Asheville 15 years ago as an inspired, an artistically-inspired woodworker, and I moved here, as I had entered a piece of my furniture, a chair, into a chair show at the Paul Carter Center. And I was in Chicago at the time, and I'd received a few awards for this piece, and thought I was a shoe-in to get into a show in little old Asheville. And I was kind of surprised that I didn't make it into this show, so I had to come to Asheville to see what the big deal was, and I was also interested in moving here. And I walked into the Grove Wood Gallery, and I was blown away at the amount of studio furniture that was presented in this gallery. It was more incredible than anything that I'd ever seen in Chicago. And as a person who was coming here to make a living in the arts, it was very encouraging that the arts were so supported by the community. I've been to the Asheville Art Museum only twice since I've lived here, and I don't find it to be the most inspiring cultural entity around. I do believe that the enrichment of our culture and our society through cultural enrichment is essential, but I would say that it's further down the list of essential needs than what we're faced with now. So one of the initiatives that I would like to put forth if I were privileged enough to serve on the city council is a worst-first improvement protocol when it comes to infrastructure, and at this point, I don't see the improvements in the art museum as being as essential to the quality of life issues that we have in town. So I'm not really in favor of the allocation of the art, that's the art museum, given as an artist myself.
Number two, please. Number two is for Esther Mannheimer. This has, the question from the audience is, "Since data shows how successful business improvement districts are, or have been in other cities, how do you feel about a bid for Asheville at some time in the future?"
Okay, so the question is about the business improvement district, and this was a proposal that came before council, actually several different times on different parts of it, and basically it created a taxing district for downtown. Most of you know that, just maybe the two people in the room that don't know that. And it would, the tax revenues raised from the bid would be used to be reinvested in downtown. downtown. And as it was working its way through council and in front of council, I was supportive of the bid, I remain supportive of the bid. I see Kim McQueen here, who put her blood, sweat, tears into the bid, and I appreciate everyone who worked so hard to make, to try to make that a reality. And it did not, it obviously did not come to fruition, and a lot of different things ended up happening, but ultimately, part of the property tax increase that was just, that just occurred, will be used, in a way that I think the bid envisioned, and that is towards street cleaning and other infrastructure improvements in the downtown. And of course, the difference is that that's a citywide tax versus the bid, which was just a tax on the downtown. So what I would like to do at this point, since we, since we as the City Council basically proceeded with an alternate, what I'd call an alternate concept, which was bandied about at the time, using revenue to try to accomplish some of the things the bid sought to accomplish. And you can see that now in the five-year capital improvement plan and in this year's budget, and the street cleaner, sidewalk cleaner contractors that are coming online the second half of this year. So I'd like an opportunity to see how all of the various components of that work and come together. I want to hear from you all, whether you think it's working, and whether it's accomplishing the things that the bid set out to accomplish. And if it's not meeting it, then I'm certainly supportive of revisiting the bid concept.
A quick yes or no, if you don't mind, right down the line. You said you're yes to the bid?
Yes.
Could you pass the mic down? Yes or no on the creation of a business improvement district in the next session of the next city council? Yes or no, please?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
The downtown would be ten.
Yes or no, please?
No, Megan.
Who has number three? Cecil Bothwell. The question is, the pilot street cleaning project is funded for $150,000. Will this be funded moving forward as well?
I would say if it's successful, we'll certainly fund it going forward. I mean, the idea is to try and find out how it works and if it achieves the results we're looking for. And since this ties into the bid question, I think I will, I think I'll take a detour here to mention that I really think that this kind of function, street cleaning, sidewalk cleaning, and so forth, are a function of city government. And I think that tax monies should be spent by elected officials, or under the direction of elected officials, and not under the direction of a non-elected board. And that's the basis of my opposition to a bid. I think if we're going to tax people, you've got to be able to throw us out if you don't like it. And I really, I can't get there to the idea of expenditure of tax money by non-elected people. I think we've seen real problems with the PAC Square Conservancy, which was able to divert tax money and then bail out and leave the city stuck with a big bill. I think we've seen some pretty serious problems with Grove Arcade, actually, in terms of a non-elected body spending public money. So that's my basis for opposition to the bid. It's not that I don't think we need that stuff downtown, I think it's the obligation of the city to do those things. So, street cleaning, yes, sidewalk cleaning, yes, we need to do those things, we need to have more trash receptacles downtown, recycling receptacles, we've got to fix it. But I think it's our responsibility on council to do that, and not something to be passed off to some non-elected board.
Number four. Number four. Jonathan Mile, how do you plan to balance the needs of much-needed tourist community and the full-time residents of Asheville? Examples are traffic, business, licensing opportunities, and special programs?
The balancing act that Asheville has to deal with on a daily basis, some of you have heard in previous forums, I've heard this information across my 30-year career with the city, is Asheville has a huge influx of population daily, people commuting into the city to work and sometimes to vacation and otherwise enjoy our downtown. Those folks typically aren't paying taxes to support those things. So how do we find the balance? I would say the balance ultimately starts with leadership. I have to back up to the last question to hardly answer that. Mr. Bothwell expressed again, and I've heard this expressed on the campaign trail this year, about strong feelings on his and some other people's parts, that we don't need non-elected officials spending public money. That's the best argument I've ever heard against not giving too many dollars to an art museum. If we're not going to give non-elected officials control of public money, why do we turn right around and do it? I think the bid is ultimately a good idea for where we could have begun this process to start that balance. We are going to have to work with our legislature, we're going to have to allow the bid to go forward. I was struck that Ms. Mannheimer stated in her comments that she supported the bid, but she and the council voted down. I think, frankly, I think the people in this room that spent years and hundreds and hundreds of hours to get that bid up and approved, and then to have it yanked out from under them should feel very, very slight, should feel, should very much feel received. I think the bid is the first step in that process. I think developing the relationship with our legislature to get some new revenue, whether that's a room tax, there could be a lot of other possibilities, but we're going to need to find some stream of revenue besides the backs of our taxpayers that has had so much heat going up even in the last couple of months with the tax increase and a new fee. So, and ultimately I would say the answer to that question is, we have to do a better job of what we're presently doing. We have to get the bid approved as it should have been approved in this past budget, and moreover, we're going to have to find new sources of revenue to find that magic balance that we need with visitors and tourists.
Mike Lanning, you have number five? Question number five for Mike Lanning. What are your plans to manage and not control the growth in Asheville, in particular the areas just outside the downtown area and two or three miles beyond downtown?
Well, the problem is, over the years, we had, we could use annexation for the entire city to bring in revenue. The problem now is, is getting built in on just about every square, you know, square foot we have in the city. It's going to be a balancing act, from what it appears going forward from downtown out. If we have to live up to the standard of density, I don't know what the answer is, we're going to, anywhere we build, we're going to be building on top of each other. So downtown, well, it's like you go to Florida, you go to Florida, and you go from Fort Lauderdale to Hollywood to Miami. I can remember when it was all separate, now it's all one, one giant city. And eventually, there's still some way downtown is separate from these other sections of the city. And currently the way it is, I'm afraid that we're headed down the road where we're going to, we're going to have to build on the density. We're not going to have it any longer.
Okay, this is for Gwen Whistler. Number six, I assume.
Yes.
Okay, the question is regarding Asheville, Asheville's transit. Given all the marketing efforts to promote transit system, would you oppose redirecting local dollars away from transit and using those dollars to clean up downtown?
Can you ask? I guess I'll just talk about it. I think, again, it's a balancing act. I'm very supportive of increasing our transportation choices. I think it's important that we expand our bus system and the ability for people to get to and from their homes to where they work and where they play. I'd like, so, so I don't think that, so I do think that transportation choice is a priority, and I think that those would, making that a priority would help downtown in the sense that it would decrease our need to have more parking, et cetera. I don't think that that necessarily, I think that we can come up with a balance between those transportation needs and the infrastructure and the cleanup of downtown. I don't think that it's a, it's a either or, which I think is what the questions are
Gordon Spith asks number seven. The question is, building trust is crucial. If elected, how important do you consider Asheville City Council's code of ethics, and are you willing to hold other council members accountable for their actions as related to ethics violations?
Thanks for the question. I've seen this question asked online several times. I think that there's some folks who aren't big fans of the Asheville City Council who have interpreted the ethics to mean something other than what some of us might interpret those as. But what I would say is that I've had a real privilege of working with people, with these folks on City Council. I myself have worked really hard to be as transparent and open and as communicative and as successful as possible, and whenever possible, to make really clear the reasons why I'm deciding what I'm deciding. And I think it is important to, for all of you, to reach out and let us know how we're doing in regards to all that. Since, I've got three minutes, there's a couple of things I want to touch on.
When you're talking about things that don't need to be true, you're just being fine. Do you feel a question?
So, I did want to mention that one of the things that's coming forward for downtown is $175,000 investment in traction recycling containers. The $150,000 cleaning that's coming forward as well. And what I'm excited about, as Esther touched on, is this reinvestment strategy around making sure that we're getting the South Slope and the River District ready for private investment, and also invest, reinvesting in our art museum to be able to have a return on investment there. Another piece that's happening is the Eagle Marketplace development is about to happen right behind us here on the block, and this is a transformational development supported by the City Council. It's going to be 62 units of affordable housing, 8,000 square feet of retail space with historic preservation down in an area that has been too long neglected. It's, I think it's going to have amazing ripple effects, and so we're talking about opening up the South Slope for reinvestment. Also over here on the block, you're going to see more and more reinvestment. I think that downtown is enjoying kind of an unprecedented success right now. We know that room occupancy is greater than it was pre-recession, while rate is at least 50% higher. We know we have more people downtown than we've ever had. I think that our maintenance has to rise to the level of use at this point, and we have to make sure that we continue to address that stuff. That's why during the bid debate, I don't think there was any disagreement over the needs, it was just a question of how to get at it. And so I'm really pleased that we're stepping forward to do some of that, and that despite a great recession and a hostile legislature, you've got a City Council that has been finding solutions and finding a way to keep moving us forward.
I'm going to, the next question is actually, I'm going to ask this question, and I'm going to give each candidate three minutes to answer the question. And up to three minutes, okay? So the question, we'll start with Esther Mannheimer. The question is, what should happen to the property across, the city-owned property across the street from the Civic Center and the Basilica?
I'm glad you answered this question, but is there any way someone could cut the air down? My teeth might shatter out of my head. I don't, I don't know if it's just me, but I'm freezing. Okay. All right. This is the property across from the US Cellular Center formerly known as the Civic Center. And it, right now, it looks like a sort of war-torn, you know, I'm not sure, Bosnia or something like that, that has the old parking deck on it, some surface parking, and the old Flying Frog Restaurant building on it. The property already is, is subject to an agreement with McKibben to develop a hotel. And that project was delayed because a lawsuit was brought by some other hoteliers downtown against McKibben and the city. And I'm not sure the status of that lawsuit currently. I think that it is still, it may have just been dismissed, I'm not quite certain, but there's some loose ends to wrap up. In the meantime, we are impatient. I share your patience. Thank you for the air. The site needs to be cleaned up immediately, and the city has bid out the demolition services needed to remove those buildings and take care of the dilapidation that you, that you're currently witnessing on that site. That's not anything that we want to continue in downtown. And this City Council group are very impatient with the delay and asked the city manager to go ahead and move forward with that. That's the current status.
Jonathan Mile, please.
Same question, if I'm understanding. The Basilica property, as I refer to it, the same property that Ms. Mannheimer just talked about, I've just got all kinds of problems with that, I'll be honest. One is that it's almost unconscionable in my mind that you own a piece of property, it has assets on it, these deteriorated buildings, the old parking garage, and that the city would somehow see fit to pay for the demolition of that and incur that expense before the developer decides he can afford to build. In my personal opinion, if a developer has the money and the resources and the partnerships, but he or she is going to build something on the scale of a hotel, they need to deal with it. I don't think it's up to the taxpayers to do that. I think it, I think it inflates the cost of the project to the city. I think we should have thought that through before we agreed to it. If it was a material condition of the contract for purchase, then it certainly should have been deducted from the purchase price. I'm not sure that the city is well-served by this mad rush to develop more and more things and help developers do their developing. I think the city can set the standard, I think we can get the input from the Downtown Association and help frame the things we want to do and want to see, but I don't see it's a responsibility of the taxpayers to fund those improvements before development can begin.
Quick follow-up, yes or no? Do you support construction of a hotel on that site?
A hotel, an office, I don't, I'm not married to a hotel. Development is fine with me.
I think the question was yes or no.
Yes.
Yes on the hotel, okay. Cecil Bothwell, please.
Point of clarification, the contract included demolition, so whether we do it or the, or whether McKibben does it, it's the same cost to the city. So it's not, I mean, if we do it first and he still goes ahead with his hotel, that hasn't changed the deal. It comes off the contract price. However, that said, the reason I voted against sale to McKibben is that that contract had expired. It had clearly expired under the terms of the contract. That contract required that McKibben developed that property within, I think it was two years of the time the contract was signed, and he failed to do so. We can say it was the economy, fine, I don't care. The contract had expired. We had no obligation to honor that. There would have been no lawsuit had we followed through on that. Furthermore, had I been on council at the time that that contract was accepted, if you issue an RFP, a request for proposals, and only one entity comes forward, there is a big problem with the sale. I don't think we should have sold it to McKibben in the first place. I think several years ago, when we decided as a city that we didn't want to build the parking garage wrapped around the Battery Park apartments, that we didn't in fact need that parking garage at the time, we should have bulldozed those buildings and put in surface parking for the interim until we figured out what it is we wanted to do. And put up an RFP, fine, but wait till we get some bids on the darn thing. I mean, it was a fire sale. There was one bidder, he got the contract, he failed on the contract, we still decided to sell it to him. What kind of business dealing is that? It's nothing that I would do. As to what exactly should be there, I don't know. I think the Basilica is an incredibly gorgeous building, it's a world-class building. I would hope that whatever development goes on there, leaves some space for people to see, to still observe that Basilica in its grandeur. So I hope it's going to hold back from that place. Whether it's a hotel or not, I don't know. It seems like the private, private development is providing the hotels we need right now elsewhere downtown. elsewhere downtown. In fact, McKibben, I think, is going to put a hotel in the BB&amp;T building. We've got the Indigo, we've got the one going up on the Three Brothers property. We're getting hotels. Maybe we need to fully rethink, what is it that we actually need at the Civic Center? At the time that that idea came forward, almost 10 years ago, the idea was that we were going to be, we were going to be a Civic Center that had big conventions and that we would need hotel space to have conventioners come to our Civic Center? Well, in fact, now conventions actually go to the Crown Plaza or the Renaissance, I mean, there are other places around. Our Civic Center is not actually built. It's, it really isn't designed to be that kind of a conference center.
That's all the time. Mike Lanning, please.
I'd agree with John. If the city has paid for the demolition of the building, I just don't see how the taxpayers should have been burdened with that. The hotel should, that should have been included in their, their bid. I'm one of the people that grew up here and Asheville, downtown Nashville is such a great place. I grew up here when it was all boarded up during the eighties, the nineties. I actually worked downtown as a police officer for three years. And the only problem we had then was, was the drunks, running drugs off. But whether it's a hotel, whether it's a parking deck, and I personally think there needs some more, there needs to be some more parking decks right behind the police department in this building would be a great location. But if you're going to, if you're, if Asheville's based on service industry, what better thing to have than a hotel? The more hotels you have downtown, the better. Because if you're spending $2 million on an art museum and you want people to come to it, they can't all drive and find parking spaces unless you build a deck. So what better place to have is a place where they can stay and they already have a parking spot for the hotel.
The 51 Haywood Street property went through an RFP process. What Cecil said was true in that we only had the one bid returned. However, it was an open process and the Basilica representatives were solicited during that process to submit a proposal and did not do so. And as far as whether the John McKibben Hotel is going to go up there, we don't know yet. We don't know if that's going to happen. I'm thrilled that he's willing to take on the BB&amp;T and do what is going to be one of the highest-profile transformations that he could do on a building downtown. I'm really excited to see where that's going to go. If he chooses not to build there, it's my thought, it's time for us to start over. There we are, we're back at square one. We need to go ahead and demolish the buildings, which is going to make it easier for private investors to come in. And what Cecil said about the cost for that was also true. So we need to go ahead and demolish the Handy Park and the Flying Frog. Those are safety issues, we've got to get those taken care of. And then the new council would decide on the criteria for that request for proposals. For me, those criteria are a few, and then I kind of open it up quite a lot. One is that what you've got down there right now is dead space. You see it over and over. You see people walking down the Haywood Street, and then they hit that lot and they spin around and they walk back up. They're coming out of the Grove Arcade and they see this dead space and they spin around and oftentimes will go the other way unless they know that they can get into the Basilica and they go over there. So activating that space to be able to create more circulation downtown and be able to just kind of enliven an area that's now dead, that's one criteria for me. Another is to complement the Civic Center. While I understand Councilman Bothwell's point of view on this, having been on the TDA board for the last couple of years, I'm also acutely aware of the, of the lack of convention services that we're able to offer in tandem with the Civic Center. So if someone wanted to come forward with a proposal for that, I would, I would ask for them to discuss how it was going to complement what's happening there at the City Center. Maybe that's a hotel, maybe it's not. It might be some other kind of service. But I'd be open to seeing what people bring. And lastly, to make sure that whatever goes there is scaled appropriately. This, this city council changed the downtown development guidelines to create a much stricter set of rules based upon the downtown master plan, which was brought about after the input of hundreds of downtown folks and hundreds if not thousands of hours of input. And so whatever goes there needs to be scaled appropriately in the, in the spirit of the downtown master plan.
I'm thoroughly appalled at the lack of acknowledgement of the nuts and bolts problem that we're faced with right now. It's a dangerous piece of property. It's open, it's insecure. I'm looking at Gwen's question number two here. Chief Anderson recently announced a 52% increase in violent crime and 34% increase in property crime in downtown Nashville. There's a thing called the broken window effect. Every day, every day, people come to this town, our economy depends on our appearance. And this is sitting here, the gateway of our town, and I'm appalled that the property owners have allowed this piece of property to fall into such disrepair. And the city is the property owners. I don't really care about the contract and how it fell through. I don't really care so much about what the, what the plan is going to be in the future. I don't really care that we might demolish the building in eight months from now. It's a danger tonight, it was a danger last night. Rate is also up 50% in this town. And so what I would do is I would take my pick 'em up truck and I would go to Lowe's and I would buy three sheets of plywood. I would cut that piece of plywood down to put in the windows. I would then paint over that plywood to give it a more presentable appearance and deal with the problem that's facing us right now. I don't care if it's a little bit of temporary money that goes down the drain because we're going to demolish the building in eight months. It's another eight months of danger. I live on the other side of the River Arts District. Last October, there was a murder in that building. The city had to buy that piece of property because there were all kinds of vagrants living in there. The city, the building was so dangerous, the police officers had a standing order not to go in that building. So it was basically like a wall as dead wood land in there. And I just, I can't believe that we allow our town to be presented this way in such a prominent location and we quibble about some, you know, fire sale and this guy's got the contract on that and this guy is just passing the buck. I mean, just deal with the problem. That is what needs to happen.
So the question is, is what, what should happen with that property? We are under contract at this point and I agree that the building that's there right now needs to be demolished as quickly as possible. I'd like to see the projected owner of that actually demolish it. I had a lot of issues with the process of how that, how that property got sold, et cetera, but it's, it's a bit, what's done is done. And if McKibben can't follow through with the contract, then I would agree, let's start over and, and deal with this property, but not, not revisit the decision that previous councils made at this point that we can't really change.
Why don't you keep the microphone right there? We'll start at the, at your end this time. This is from the audience and I have a follow-up question that relates to it. But the question from the audience is, would you support or oppose discounted parking in city lots for downtown service workers, for employees who work downtown?
I definitely would like to explore that, understand what the cost of that would be as opposed to, I, I would prefer improving transportation choices and to see if there's a way that we could encourage the downtown workers to use the mass transit system as opposed to encouraging parking. So, but the idea of discounting parking for workers, I would certainly explore.
Jonathan Wayne Scott, please.
It seems like a pretty cut and dry sort of problem equals solution, but I think that everybody who works has a certain cost of getting to work. Some people have to commute long miles, some people have to take the bus, some people have other conditions, you know. So I guess I don't see that as a particular condition to be mitigated for a particular group of people just because there is a parking cost involved with where they work. I mean, the cost for them to get another job and drive somewhere further, pay that much in gas, but not have to pay parking is probably also an option. So I would, I would like to think about it a little bit more, but off the top of my head, I would say probably I would not support a discounted rate for service workers.
I'm open to the idea. It's not, it's not an idea that I've heard some folks come up with before. But my tenure on council, as well as my first campaign, as well as this campaign, has been in large part focused on some of these affordability issues that working people in this town face. And we know that bringing good jobs here to raise the median wage so people can afford to live better in this town is, is job one. We've brought a lot of big employers here. Going forward, I think we need to focus more on how we can support our small and medium-sized homegrown businesses as they try to grow and create jobs. And it may be that being able to offer businesses rather than workers, some of those parking discounts that could possibly be a way forward, I'd really like to look more at it. I think we also have to look at increasing affordable housing across the city. We've tripled the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We're looking at some new density overlays to try to get more dense housing built because the pressures on the market are so high right now. And we also need to continue, continue to improve our transit system. Right now, if you have a job that you need to take a bus to, you better not have to work on Sunday. And I think it's going to be one of the jobs of the next council, to get Sunday service working and to continue to improve the service over time so that working people can climb out, can climb up into the middle class. And I think that's a responsibility that we all share. And I want to applaud those business owners in this room who have chosen to pay their workers a living wage. The city passed a living wage ordinance for contractors. We already pay our employees a living wage, but we passed a, an ordinance to require that everyone contracting with the city also pay a living wage. A month after we passed that, the legislature made it illegal for us to do that. We're going to continue to find ways to make Asheville more affordable for working people. The idea of reduced parking sounds great. I'd like to make sure that there's transit options and bike options and walking options and that there's housing options close enough to downtown that those become feasible. Oh, and by the way, support your living wage businesses.
I would support it. Working for the city for 30 years, anybody who works at City Hall knows that it's hard to find parking, or the county is hard to find any parking. So I'm in favor of that. And since Gordon brought up affordable housing, I'm, I'm in favor of affordable housing. And I'll go further on and bring up an issue that's not been brought up in many municipalities do this. Currently, there, I don't, I'm trying, I'm trying to get the facts now from the police department and they're slow giving them to me. But I'm trying to find out how many officers actually live in the city of Asheville, very few actually live in the city of Asheville. Most of them live in other counties, matter of fact. And if I was elected, one of the things I'd like to float, see if there was support there dealing with affordable housing, is if the city would be willing to waive property taxes for officers who lived inside the city. It would help with crime and you have your own personal officers that lived in your neighborhood. So I support the affordable housing issues and those incentives as far as parking. We need, we need to build some more parking decks. We just can't bike everywhere you walk downtown.
I'm afraid I'm not really current. When I was managing out there at the Mountain Express, my memory is that we were able to buy discounted parking permits for our employees. So I think businesses still can do that, but I'm not positive about that. What I have advocated now for a few years and have not found a way forward with is that I think city residents should get a discount on parking. I think it's one way we can take out the problem that John Mile mentioned a few, few minutes back about the great influx of people into the city who don't pay any taxes. One of the only levers we have is that people who live outside the city might have to pay more for parking. And why shouldn't residents, particularly taxpayers, but even renters who are also paying their share of city taxes, have a magnetic card they can swipe at our parking garages and get a lower price? It would seem to me, and especially now that we also have cell phone, you can, you can activate a parking meter with your cell phone. Why not let city, people who are paying city taxes get a better deal than people who aren't paying city taxes? We can't put toll roads up unfortunately, like some big cities that are on islands like New York, where they're able to tax people coming into the city that way. We aren't allowed to have a city, a income tax in the city like in many states. But we've got to find some way to increase revenue for the city, and I think parking might be one of the hinge points.
Only in the course of a campaign could we ask a question about, about one subject. I'm not talking about bus service and so many other things. I guess that's just natural. The bus service thing is a problem. I would, I would propose that Sunday bus service hasn't existed. It's all of a sudden a very important issue to the current council because it's an election year. I predict you still won't see Sunday bus service. It wasn't important enough in the last four years, you're not going to see it next year. That said, I personally appeared before the council out of the community meeting in Shiloh many, many months ago, and I asked a very simple question. Why do sick elderly and pregnant people have to walk up the hill to get to Mahak from Billmore Avenue? And I've never heard such a long convoluted answer in my life. And right now, pregnant, sick and elderly people are still walking up that hill to get medical care. It's absolutely insane that we treat people the way we do for the taxes they're paying. Now that said, I think one solution, and I'll have to say, I actually agree with Mr. Bothwell, not that I find myself in disagreement with him all that often, but I do agree. I would only take his concept a step further, that perhaps here's a unique opportunity to tax those people that we talked about a while ago that are the influx into our city daily. What if there were a few cents added to a lunch tab or to the cost of a pair of shoes or whatever else is rented downtown? What if that few cents subsidized employee parking in these parking decks? I think we could do it. I think we, I think the Business Association, Downtown Association certainly has an opportunity to do that. And perhaps if those discounted parking coupons are not available, they need to be available. Tops for Shoes does that for its customers right now and always have. One of the great...
The people are asking for help.
Excuse me, please. Let them answer the question.
I am suggesting again that I think we could make the parking available perhaps through some discounted rate, much as Cecil indicated. But I'd go a step further and say it may be the responsibility of the business owners unless the responsibility of the taxpayers.
The disadvantage of going at the end of one of these questions is people have pretty much covered all of it. The, the parking revenues for the city of Asheville are used, they're collected separately and kept in an enterprise fund, and they are used to subsidize the transit service, the bus service, with the idea being that you want to encourage bus ridership and less car driving downtown, so you should take your car parking revenue and invest it in your transit service, sort of a circular concept. But the transit service still needs to be heavily subsidized in any event. And since I have been on council, this city council has supported bringing online Saturday service and increased frequency on certain routes, and I do anticipate that Sunday service will be added. I'm one of those employers that buys a whole lot of parking for my employees downtown. Our, our firm purchases, I don't know, something like 50 parking spaces, mostly over in the U.S. Cellular Center deck. And I know that there is some advantage to buying a whole bunch of monthly or annual passes, some sort of group rate. And I would be, you know, like Gwen said, interested in looking at the numbers in terms of providing discounts for employers, but as I mentioned, the, the parking revenue is used to subsidize, subsidize the transit service and it certainly doesn't cover all the costs. So, so that's a balancing act and would have to be examined closely. One thing that, that I support and that this city council has moved forward is trying to integrate all of the multimodal plans. That's the pedestrian master plan, another word for sidewalks, greenway master plans, bikeway master plans, to try to integrate and make it accessible downtown from other areas of town. So if you're in West Nashville or you're in the River Arts District or wherever you may be, you can hopefully enjoy infrastructure other than just roadways to get you into downtown if you want to ride your bike, you want to walk, or whatever the case may be, to help alleviate some of the pressure for car driving into downtown.
Before we move to the last question, a quick yes or no. Everyone knows that Asheville loves to talk about parking, so a quick yes or no. And we'll just keep the microphone here and we'll run right down. Quick yes or no? A parking deck was talked about and promised by the previous city council for the area near the Grove Arcade. Do you support living up to that promise? Yes or no? Do you support living up to that promise, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Wish I had some more choices here. Thanks, David. You love these yes or no questions.
I do.
Right now, I'll say no.
Blue.
No.
No.
Okay, now what we're going to do is ask you to draw another number and take, to see who goes in the order that we're going to ask the last question before closing statements.
Don't you guys think that all these people deserve to know that since
Excuse me, excuse me.
Transit numbers are down?
Excuse me.
Are you spending more and more money?
Excuse me.
Don't you think they deserve to know? Doesn't anybody out there think they deserve to know that they're putting more and more money into the transit system?
Please stop. Please stop. Please stop, okay? Please stop.
We can't even ask for a question.
Please stop.
Why? Why can't we ask for a question?
Please stop. If you want to talk about the questions, ask the ADA after the event, but instead of grandstanding, and if you wanted to be a candidate for city council, then you should have run. All right? So let's, let's.
I did.
Please, 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 please.
They let people ask for a question. When I am, they let people ask for a question, only since we have all these Sit down. Are the ADA preventing it?
Sit down.
Only since then.
Sit down. All right, so did everyone take a number?
No requests.
Yes? Okay, so the final question as, from the Issues Committee of the ADA, is, who has number one? So the advantage obviously is to the other folks who are going to hear this question, but that's the way it is on this particular question. The last question is each candidate, we're asking you to identify the most
This is grandstanding. What they're doing is grandstanding.
Please identify the most pressing issue facing downtown Asheville and elaborate on a solution. And we'll start with, who has number one? Cecil Bothwell, thank you.
Everestert, yeah. I really think the most pressing overall issue facing downtown Asheville is, is that influx of people coming to this city who are not helping to fund the city. The commuters, we can't do much about, but the tourists, we can. And I really think that the only answer to increase funding for the kind of amenities we want to see downtown, for the cleanliness we want to see downtown, will be to raise the room tax. I really think we need to convince our legislators that that is the deal because we get tourists coming here to town who are paying a four cent tax. None of that money goes to the city coffers, none of it goes to help keep the streets clean, to fill the potholes, to fix the sidewalks, to build, to put in the trash receptacles, to do any of the stuff that we talk about needing to do downtown. Other cities, for instance Wilmington, have, I think it's, Wilmington I believe is an eleven cent room tax, and a good portion of that goes to general coffers for upkeep of the downtown. Now, we've heard from hoteliers here and the people in the industry that if we were to raise the tax here, that we would drive off traffic. I don't believe it. I really don't believe it. If there's that kind of disparity, Knoxville has a higher room tax, Raleigh has a higher room tax, Charlotte has a higher room tax. We can, with a higher tax, we could actually get some of the people who are enjoying our amenities to help pay for those amenities. And I think that is the core issue for the city. It addresses a lot of the other stuff that we're doing downtown or that we're not doing. And so I would join you to contact your legislators. Neither party has helped out here. This is not partisan. When the Democrats were in control in Raleigh, they wouldn't do it for us either. It's something that has to come from Raleigh. We can't do it as a city under our state laws. So we need to convince Raleigh that we should be allowed to have a higher tax here and that some portion of that tourist money should help keep up this city.
Well, I thoroughly agree with Cecil when it comes to increasing tourism taxes. We could also explore a prepared food and beverage tax as well. One of the problems that we have citywide, and it's not just downtown, is that we actually have very low property taxes relative to the rest of the state, but we have a very high cost of living. So the only, I think the only city that I've found, well, other than Dare County, that has a higher cost of living than Asheville is Chapel Hill, but they have a 50% higher property taxes. So we're faced with this situation where we have a taxation that's not keeping up with our infrastructure needs. If places like Hickory, Burlington, Morton have a higher tax rate and a lower cost of living, their money, their tax money goes much further to pay for infrastructure improvements. So in addition to finding ways to make money off of tourism, if it is going to be an industry that actually provides us with some bread and butter, one of the things I think that we should also do is to explore our ability to increase revenue through enterprise revenue, which is thoroughly outside the taxation structure. And of course, this would also require cooperation with Raleigh as well. In some of my research over economic development issues, one of the interesting things I found was that Texas is the second fastest growing economy of all states in the country, and it's based on two factors. One is oil, as you could imagine, that's natural resources, and the other is sheer population growth. Between the years of 2000 and 2010, Texas grew by 20%. In the same years, same time period, Asheville grew by 21.1%. So we have this robust growth, but it's really not bringing any fish into the boat. Now going back to Texas, they also have oil, again, a natural resource. In many parts of the world, water is more valuable than oil. And in Asheville, we have copious amounts of pristine water, and we really need to explore what ownership of water is, not just ownership of the water system, but actually ownership of water. Nestle Corporation goes into Canada, drills a hole in the ground and pumps out 265 million liters of water every year and pays nothing for it. And we've got some of the same situations here in Asheville as well. When New Belgium is up to its maximum capacity, they're going to buy 62 million gallons of water from the Asheville city water system, and it's going to cost them $177,000 a year. On the retail level, that same water can go for as high as $98 million. You can go to Harris Teeter right now and find a gallon of water that costs a dollar or 60 that was shipped here from Virginia. So we really need to start exploring how we can take greater ownership of our
John, John, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Number three, please.
The question being, what is the most pressing issue facing downtown? I think it's commitment or lack thereof. There's a giant in the room tonight. Some of you know Leslie Anderson. I have the great privilege of saying I've been a friend of Leslie's for over 40 years. She was part of the magic that created the downtown we all have enjoyed for many, many years. There was a time when downtown was boarded up, it was vacant, it was a virtual sinkhole. It was an absolute mess. Nothing and nobody came to the downtown. Now Leslie didn't do that on her own. There was a commitment on the part of elected officials across many majors and many councils and many managers for many years. There was a core commitment to improve downtown. There was an office of downtown development on Haywood Street. It was literally created so the city's presence would be right in the heart of downtown every day. So when business owners like yourselves had concerns or needs or problems, you had a place to go. It was the, it was the personal banker approach, if you will, to development and sustaining downtown. What we've seen is downtown has declined over the last several years, not to a point where I think we're in the same shape we were in the eighties. But I think what the biggest, I think the single biggest issue facing downtown going forward is going to be, what level of commitment do you have from city of Asheville and your elected leaders, and what's it going to be going forward? We know what it's been for the last four years, and if you're happy with that, then you're going to be happy re-electing the same people to council. If you believe we can do better, and I think that's the challenge facing Asheville right now in general and downtown in particular, you're going to have to make changes.
I also grew up in Asheville, as I mentioned earlier, when it was boarded up during the seventies and eighties, and it's come a long way. West Asheville's come a long way, a lot of areas that were, were neglected over the years, they just, they've done 180, they've turned around. So the biggest issue is maintaining where we're at now for downtown. You've got to maintain where we're at. We can't let it slide any. And one of the biggest problems, you can have the best streets, lights and sidewalks, but if you don't have police or not keeping your police officers, you're, none of it's worth anything. The city's going to have to pay attention, and I emphasize this every meeting, they've got to pay attention to the retention problems of the police department. You cannot continue losing officers. And if you continue losing officers and the word keeps getting out, Asheville's not a place to come to work, and that's happening now, they're going, you've had officers leave Asheville, go to work in Whitfield. So if the word starts getting out and they can't get any recruits, what are you going to do? No cities, it's not worth, it's infrastructure if you don't have police protection. And as quoted earlier, the crime rate's up in downtown. And if you've looked at any reports, newspaper, it's up all over the city, the break-in and entries and those type of things. You've got to have a police force, you've got to have that. And if you want to maintain and stop the graffiti, you're going to have to go to legislation and them introduce new language, change the language, or men watch on the books now because there's no teeth in the law. So to keep Asheville safe and the way it is now, we have to maintain it, we have to address the police issue.
Number five.
The biggest challenge, I think, facing downtown is retaining authenticity in the city of Asheville. Mr. Mile mentioned Leslie Anderson and her work. That work was with lots of entrepreneurs and small business people in addition to those elected officials and government folks. The spark that was lit is one that we have to be careful doesn't get put out. If downtown becomes a place that is geared only towards tourists, we're at risk of losing that authenticity. I think it's incumbent upon city council to support these small and independent businesses that are the beating heart of downtown. And so we can continue to have affordable food, affordable music and arts experiences, places to eat and drink and within a reasonable distance live within downtown, maintaining a lively street life, maintaining our spontaneity as a culture. I think we can encourage more independent investment with some of the things that we're doing. There's going to be some small businesses down here in Eagle Market. I think South Loop has a lot of potential to have more of that come up. But a few months ago, I initiated an Economic Incentives Task Force to have a look at how we can better support those small and medium-sized homegrown businesses that are going to be the job creators making those living wage jobs. And I think that, that driving force is something that is going to help us maintain this authenticity as this world renown shows up at our door. I think it's obvious that we need more revenue because the maintenance of downtown needs to be commensurate with its use. And so all of those revenue options, they're all really important, some of the things other folks mentioned. But above all, just remember who we are. In addition to doing that, I think we do have a result graffiti issue. That's going to come before city council very soon. The downtown police unit has two sergeants, five-day officers, five-night officers. We're currently one short in each shift. They're supported by the Charlie Unit, the APD, there's 40 sworn officers in there. We currently have four vacancies. I think we need to get fully staffed, but I don't want anyone to get the wrong impression that there's some devastating loss of officers at this time. I don't believe that that's the case. So we need to keep being who we are, and we need to gear our city towards the people that live here and the people that are ready to continue making it great. I'm really glad that visitors come and enjoy the things that we enjoy, but they don't enjoy it because we built it for them. They enjoy it because we built it for us, and we need to keep doing that.
Thank you very much.
I put this question out to some business owners that, that I know from downtown, and I got numerous answers, as you can imagine, and very, got a lot of great input. But I think what it boiled down to for me is we need to manage downtown as downtown and really look at, look at it as an integrated area that has a lot of different interests, but manage it differently than we do the whole city. So things like, you probably shouldn't build a brand-new sidewalk on October 10. I'm thinking that maybe some of our downtown businesses might have a problem with that because it's in the middle of leaf season. So everything that happens downtown may be being managed with the idea that this is a, this is a unique jewel of the city. I completely agree that we need a new, we need more revenue sources and to support downtown. But I think kind of the day-to-day running of downtown, if there were, if we managed it as it, as the unique jewel that it is, and coordinated our efforts within the city with both the residents and the businesses, I think we would get a lot of day-to-day improvement to life and business downtown.
Number seven is Esther Manheimer.
Okay, the question was, what is the most pressing issue for downtown? And I, and I think all of the topics that we've discussed about crime and cleanliness and these various issues all fall under this giant umbrella of the pressure on our downtown. The pressure being the influx of approximately 50,000 people into our downtown every day. We, as you know, have the greatest daytime to nighttime difference in population, people that work here, people that are touring here. And what does that mean for Asheville? When Asheville has a wonderful thing going on here, we have a wonderful quality of life, we have something that we want to sustain, and how do we do that in the face of this great pressure of all of these bodies wanting to come to Asheville? So while it's a blessing economically, developmentally, in terms of economic development and tourism, it threatens Asheville and what makes Asheville special. So to me, the greatest challenge for downtown is trying to navigate this balance between essentially being extremely popular, but at the same time trying to sustain what makes Asheville a special place. The downtown needs to be maintained and enhanced by the city. That's our job to do that as a city, and that means everything from cleanliness to safety to infrastructure improvement and infrastructure investment. And all of that requires capital. I think we all share in the goal of ensuring that downtown is vibrant, that it's a platform for enjoyment for both our residents and our visitors. But in order to, to provide the revenues to maintain our downtown, we're, we're hampered. It requires legislation to increase the room tax or to put in place the food and beverage tax. These are resources that other communities enjoy. Sometimes I joke, it's like, well, I'm going to tie your hands behind your back and blindfold you now, try to do what everyone else does. Okay? I mean, that's the unique position that Asheville's in because we don't have some of the typical resources you would find in other cities. So what we have to do is we're a strong from within. And what that means is taking what revenue we have and investing it in our city so that we can grow our city from within. And when I say grow, I mean enhance it, beautify it, make it safe, but also make it a place where people can come and invest and open a business or grow a business and hire people.
Because of time, we're going to give each candidate one minute for a closing statement, and we'll start with Gwen Whistler.
Thanks so much. I really enjoyed tonight. I hope you, this has given you an opportunity to see what all the various candidates think. One of the, one of the reasons that we chose to buy our house where we did was because we could walk to downtown. And we're here a lot. We're going to go to dinner right after this. So I really love downtown. I think it's special. I think it's the jewel of Asheville. So I look forward to getting input from you down the road. I remind you that I'm going to be the last on the ballot, but I hope I'm your first vote.
Thank you for having all of us here tonight, and
Thank you for having all of us here tonight, and I don't really have a lot of time in my life to refine everything that I'm going to say in reverse, so I just want to say, this is probably the craziest thing that I've ever done, and, you know, I've kind of likened it to a roller coaster, and most of the time, I think I'm going to throw up, so, I hope I don't. I've never looked forward to November so much in my entire life, win, lose, or draw. And what's been really fun is to be around so many people who love Asheville. All of the candidates, everybody who comes out to these forums are particularly committed to Asheville. And I moved here fifteen years ago, and I had the blessing of having sons, twin sons three years ago, and so they're native forms, and this is the only place that they know is home, and I'm just, I'm blessed to be here, and thank you for having me. Let me know if you're going to go throw up. Again, really honored to be here tonight. Thank you Downtown Association for putting this on. I did want to recognize that we have former city councilman Brian Freeborn here with us tonight, and I wanted to thank him for his service to the city. Thanks for being here, Brian. Like I said at the outset, the collective experience and wisdom in this room regarding downtown is really helping for me. It's been really helpful as these big issues keep coming up, to be able to hear from y'all. And I'm trying to see if there's anyone in this room who looks like they wouldn't contact me if something was affecting them, or something they were concerned with. And I want you to know that one of the things that I've tried to do my entire first term is to be as responsive as possible, and to be as successful as possible. And I want you to know that I'm going to be someone you can reach out to, someone that you can share your concerns with, and that I'm interested in finding solutions. Thank you.
I want to start by thanking the Downtown Business Association. Thanks for sponsoring us, and for everyone coming out. And I think I know, on a personal note, how busy everyone is. I was born and raised here, I'm a native of Asheville. I was born and raised in West Asheville, and I served you the public for thirty years. I'm an Air Force veteran, and I've worked both at Buckland Sheriff's Department and the Asheville Police Department, from which I retired in 2009. I don't, here's the main question, who are you going to believe? Are you going to believe people in the pink building that live in the Alton Tower, or are you going to believe the people running for office? That's the question you're going to have to make a decision on November fifth, and I appreciate your vote, and your help. Thank you.
Thanks, Tall, again, for being here. One thing I'd like to make real clear is that I think that what's characterized my term, my first term on city council, is taking a pretty long view. And that long view involves our energy picture for this community and for the planet, and I think we're foolish if we ignore that. We really need to start thinking in terms of reducing our use of fossil fuels in every way possible. It's the kind of reason why I voted against the fifty-one Biltmore deck, when I think we would have been better served by putting a trolley in, that would serve all of the parking areas downtown, to get people out of their cars. It's why I support multimodal transportation, it's why I've been an active participant working for the new streetlights that are saving us three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year in electric bills, it's why I was an advocate for the single-stream recycling. We need to reduce our carbon footprint if we care at all about our grandchildren, and it has to start here, it has to start now, it has to be in your house and in my house. Thank you.
Again, I echo the sentiments of appreciation for letting us come before you tonight. Very important piece of Asheville is certainly our downtown. I want to suggest that what we have, and one of the reasons we have challenges downtown right now, and other problems down the city, is poor fiscal management. The City of Asheville's debt has increased since 2007 until 2012 to a fifty-five percent increase. It's jumped from eighty-two million to a hundred and twenty-eight million, according to their unaudited financial statements. The city has had two of the last three audited financial statements show financial improprieties, if I'm correct, if the right word appropriate would be, problems with the way they were reporting finances. Local government commission has chastised them for that, and for not recognizing the bank statement, the non-imbalance of the checkbook. Bottom line is, we've got to get control of the dollars, so you can do the things that you want to do downtown, and we can help you as a partner. I'm John Mile, I approve this message.
I would like to thank the Downtown Association for holding this candidate forum tonight, but also for continuing to be such an active member of our community, and making sure that your city council stays informed of downtown issues, and really being a functional partner with the city. I don't think that the city can be as efficiently beneficial to the downtown without the Downtown Association guiding the city through the process, talking to your membership, prioritizing issues for us, and then conveying a clear message to us. When I was working with you during the bid process, I was incredibly impressed with how organized you all are, how you worked hard to inform all of your members, and that just makes the process so much more effective in working together with the city. So I greatly appreciate that, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thanks to everyone for coming out and seeing you. Thanks very much to the candidates. Thanks to Megan Rogers for doing a great job on the phone, and to Byron Allen.
And special thanks to David and Ryan, thank you for being here.